Welcome to the special town council budget work session, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Thursday, May 2nd, 2024. There was no executive session and we've had our silent roll call. So we'll do the pledge allegiance and our budget guru Bridget is going to lead us.
.................. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bridget, and thank you for your hard work on the, on the new system that produces all these wonderful numbers. The first item is presentation to council followed by council discussion and possible direction to staff. For the town of Cave Creek, proposed fiscal year 2025 budget presented by the town manager and the interim finance director.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. So today we are resuming part two of our budget workshop. And we got through just about everything yesterday. We do have the highway user revenue fund. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mitzi who will go over the slide in front of you. Again, for references, this is page 23 of 39 in your packet and it's page 34, 34 of the PowerPoint hard copy in front of you. With that, I'll turn it over to Mitzi.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So for the highway user revenue fund, our HERF fund, we are estimating ending our fiscal year, our current fiscal year 24 with a $203,807 fund balance. That will roll over to our beginning 20 fiscal year 25 fund balance. We're expected to receive in state shared HERF monies of $393,589, $15,000 of interest income. We have one capital project to be expended out of HERF proceeds or out of the HERF fund next year. That's the 32nd Street Mill and Pave project. And we're estimating to end HERF with a fund balance of $98,037. Any questions on HERF? Special Revenue Fund?
Okay, well, we'll go on to the next topic.
So the next special revenue fund we're going to cover is our Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Fund. And we are estimating for this special revenue fund. To start with a beginning fund balance of zero, this is the special revenue fund that gets cleared out every year, receives the half cent sales tax from our, our town sales taxes in there. We've get some small amount of local fees for park admittance. And we've got some interest income of $80,000 proposed for fiscal year 25. I do want to mention, we noticed after the pamphlets were published that the half cent sales tax that was calculated for Spur Cross and we'll also see it in the half cent piece of it that's also in wastewater. It was referencing a formula based off the 24 budget instead of the 24 estimated. So we will get that adjusted, but that it's an, it's an increase of $131,800 in each of those funds in Spur Cross. So really the total revenue instead of the $1,762,500, it will be reflected at $1,894,300. So it goes up $131,800.
And just so that you're aware of it too, the actual formula for the regular local sales tax, it did not change that. So it's just these two half cent sales taxes that were affected.
We, yeah, we wanted it to be consistent with how we had it in the general fund. We just missed the formula. But we will get that fixed in the tentative budget that comes forward. So with that being said, the only expenditures that we have in this fund is the $216,000 that is paid to Maricopa County for administration of the park. And that fee's been the same consistently over the last few years, but for fiscal year 25, that, that, that expense remains the same. And then the transfers out that come out of Spur Cross, there's the flat 100,000 that goes to the general fund for our trails. And the balance gets split with half of it going to the general fund and the other half going to the water infrastructure fund. Those amounts for fiscal year 25, as they're listed in your packet are $763,650 each to the general fund and the same amount to the water infrastructure fund. When we get the sales tax number adjusted in those, those transfers will be move up to 829,550 each. But that will clean out the Spur Cross, sweep out the Spur Cross balance and any fund balances estimated and will be zero at fiscal year 25 year end. Any questions on Spur Cross?
Mr. Mayor, I want to pass out a handout and I'll give the staff as well. This, I hope, is a correct pie chart of how things are currently set. I think we have a timing opportunity here and I just want to take a couple of minutes to chat with the council about it. And I actually going to ask for maybe Ernie's assistance. The monies, I believe, at this point have accomplished what they were originally intended to do. And with the stabilization of the projects and the funding of the projects and monies available in the budget, I would like to have the council consider today, not retrospectively necessarily, but prospectively, talk about restoring the percentage. And I won't define it properly, but it's the money after the money spent on Spur Cross for the O and M, operations and maintenance, and then the money taken out for the trails. And then after the split for the general fund, it would be the remaining piece that was originally intended for the purchase of Spur Cross Ranch, which of course was accomplished. And this would be designated as the seed money for open space preservation going forward. If, if in fact, fiscally, this is something that's feasible at this time, I'm lobbying for this to be under consideration for the new budget starting July 1st. And it's not proposing expenditures, but it's proposing the reallocation of the funding formula back to the original legislative intent, which although Spur Cross has been accomplished, the original intent was open space acquisition preservation. And then what I'm hoping is in a few years, if in fact it proves feasible after the appraisals, that something is done between the town and the state land department, we would have seed money. And that could be two, three or four years down the road. So by then you would have accumulated a pretty good balance in the open space acquisition fund. Or if you want to call it Spur Cross Conservation Fund. But I just think we're in a moment in time, unless I'm misunderstanding where things are, but I believe water and sewer is about to be retired, the remaining financial commitments. And if we can do this, I think there's two benefits. Number one is if we do anything with state land, I think we have more credibility with negotiations with the state land department, if we actually have money on the barrelhead, if we have money in a fund for generically for open space preservation, I think we might be taken more seriously by the development interest in the valley and the state land department and others who will be watching this effort. And then secondarily, the residents are accommodating to the town's other uses of the community. And maybe would feel that they might feel more supportive or understanding of the people that provide the sales tax monies. If they can see that the sales taxes have a return benefit to themselves as residents with more acquisition of open space. So I'm not an expert in any of the finances here with the monies and so forth, but listing the last two years to you, Mr. Mayor and to Ernie and so forth, it seems like we may be turning a corner on water and sewer. And if that's the case, can we consider a reallocation in the new budget generically for open space? With the supposition being, we probably wouldn't have anything coming back to the council for two, three or four years. And the most likely of any of those would be state lands. So that's what I wanted to see what other people thought up here about this.
Other comments?
I think the, the temperature of the folks in the town is very positive for, for more open space acquisition. Matter of fact, two of the, the main things, open space and trails go hand in hand in this town. So if there's any way to achieve that and start stockpiling that for future, future time, because it's not going to be the whole, the whole acreage all at once, because it's one 11 parcels or eight parcels or some, some number. It's, it's, yeah, it would, it would have to be. But, but actually, if there's some way to actually restore the intent there, you know, of course, I know when you, when you guys bought Spur Cross, I don't think you ever had any idea that we were going to be looking at this kind of, this kind of funds coming from the sales tax.
Yeah, I think you're correct, Ernie. It, the, the, the number of zeros today.
Radically different.
So, so I need to ask you, is that, so we're looking at the two, the general fund amount and the Cave Creek water amount? What are we looking at here?
No, what I'm suggesting, Mr. Mayor, is the original formula that was here when Ernie was the mayor, and then the use of the monies for sewer and water is, is actually starting July 1st of the new fiscal year, just reallocating the monies that have been being used for sewer and water. But the formula remains the same. The share with the general fund remains the same. The operations and maintenance remains the same for Spur Cross. The money for trails remains the same. But going back to the, the sliver on the pie there, and probably somebody else can explain this better. And I think as of July-
Which sliver is it?
The green.
The green. Thanks.
And based on what your projections are, Mitzi, it seems like at, starting in the new fiscal year, your account next year could have 700,000 plus in it as seed money for the account. And again, not that you're going to spend anything or commit the money to anything, but it's a reallocation. I think symbolically it's important for the community to have an open space acquisition fund. But really until you get enough money in there, there's not much you can do with it. And it doesn't represent anything more than symbolic or intent. But I do think it helps politically with the parties that some of the staff will be talking to in the future. At state land and, and it will be watched closely with the development community and certain law firms and lobbying firms. If we've already got close to a million at the end of the first year and the second year we've got more money on top of that, money speaks more than anything else. So I think it politically could be helpful.
Mayor?
Ma- I was going to say that too. Mayor and council members, we currently, the town does currently have an open space acquisition fund in existence. That's got a-
Yeah, I was going to kind of touch upon it in my comments. So so Mayor and Council, this is obviously a, a good discussion item. It's a, a policy question. And we have seen to the council members' point, a lot of interest in state trust land acquisition. What I would suggest is we have the one and a half million dollars. If you look at the next page, we have a million and a half that previously was in reserve, but because of the interest level in the community for acquisition, the staff went ahead and appropriated that for next year. So that's in the open space acquisition fund. So that might be available for some smaller type things. I know in the, the last year or so, we, we acquired about 30 some odd acres. And that's an example of that. What, what I'd like to suggest is if the council wants to make a change, we've got a couple of critical or one major infrastructure project going on right now in, in the, in the water fund, and that's the Phoenix Interconnect. And so what I'm suggesting is it's good to get the council to gauge and see what the interest level is on this. And this is a really good point for discussion. What I would suggest is possibly picking a date, like a year from now or two years from now. But we would come back very shortly after this discussion with a change in that policy that would take effect to a, a date in the future. Could always be changed. The council can always modify it. But we can revert back to a future date. But what I'm trying to get at is the funding that you see on the next page is about two, two years worth. So it kind of gets at what you're kind of suggesting of kind of squirreling away some money. And that we can demonstrate we have this. If the council wants to do what you're suggesting, the staff will obviously try to make that happen. So all I'm just suggesting is there's a couple of different ways of looking at it. I think what I heard you say, you know, either in, that in a prospective meeting in a future way that we either deal with this for next year, you don't want to address what has been already allocated, for instance, with the, the $4 million for the Phoenix Interconnect, correct? So you were thinking just going into the future, like next year or after that?
Well, Mr. Mayor and Grady, and you and I did chat about this issue before today. I'm interested in a point certain for the council to try to make a commitment to the concept. And I really kind of want to take advantage of Ernie still here because he got the baton and he won the race. And I think we can put the baton down to the next thing. We have had a policy domination of water and sewer for many, many years because of the critical necessity and the expectation of reliability. If though, we've turned the corner, and again, I'm not the best judge of that, but it seems to me from what I hear on a continuing basis. And as I mentioned to you off record, which I'm happy to say on record, I could be a lame duck and not know about it. I would like to have the council take this moment in time while we're all still here in Hail and Hardy and see if we're ready to bite the bullet and restore something to the community starting July 1st. Now you raise an intriguing idea with the other category of open space preservation and the 30 acres and so forth. Maybe another idea is to take those funds, put them back into this fund and have a year delayed enactment or something, but it would be nice to have a policy position of the council starting July 1st with a new budget that is competitive with the endless amount of money we're spending for a subset of the community that's on public utilities that the rest of us don't, we pay for it, but we don't have it. So I think it's, it's a rediscovery of roots and original purpose. And I just selfishly would like to work with Ernie while he's still here, because he's the guy that got it done. And he used the monies and nobody's ever criticized the use of the monies and that I'm aware of publicly or privately. And walking through the fire department on Saturday morning, the best proof of success is when you walk through people's ideas that come to fruition. Spur Cross is that, the fire department is that. And I think it's time to make the state lands the next great wish. And I just, I really want to see, but I may be a minority of one, I don't know. But I would like to have some discussion here to see if somebody has a better matrix for how we can do this. But to me, there's some symbolic advantage to going back. I'm the guy who signed the document. And, and we accomplished that goal under three mayors, really, if you want to think about it, or the, the post, post work as well. So I just would raise the issue that, you know, people like Susie Clancy and others prove that it's humorous for us to think we're going to work on things a year from now when we're not here for one reason or another. Why don't we tell the community that we are committed to fire and safety and we're committed to water and sewer? But we're also definitively confirmed to open space preservation, whatever it looks like. And I would love to see some proposal or idea by others who have more aptitude than I do about taking the existing funds that are available for this purpose and folding it into, back, back to this for across conservation funds. I think the timing is symbolically important, but I think it's practically important. It's meetings take five, six years. Can imagine what open space is going to take. And the state land deadline is running out regardless of what we do or what we buy. Now, if you don't agree, I'll, I'll stop. I'm not trying to push this into a 10 minute filibuster, but I really would like to get a sense of whether this has any legs or not. And if it doesn't, then, you know, we'll come back another time and discuss it. But it seems like, I believe the mayor, when he gives his financial report and he's been giving it to me and others for two years. And it's kind of exciting as to where we could potentially be going. So if that's the case, let's just talk about a reallocation with a stated purpose, probably for expenditures in three or four years, if we start the process then.
I, I kind of support doing something. I think we've talked to, well, I personally talked to probably a couple hundred people about the state land trust lands. I have yet to have somebody that says, no, we don't want to acquire any of it. There's, everybody says we want at least a piece of it. So I just think it's, I do think that, that money talks. And if we put some money aside and at least have it there, it will make a difference when it comes to actually acquisition. Now, whether we get 4,000 acres or 5,500 acres or whatever the number is, there are some critical parcels that we need to, we need to get so that we can connect Spur Cross to Cave Creek Regional Park in a minimum. But there's a couple of other areas too that we probably want to preserve. So I would think that we'd want to start setting money aside for that. And I, I mean, I'm not sure what the right number is, but I do support putting something in open space acquisition.
When you talk to people about Cave Creek, just generally, one of the things that the, the people who've lived here a long time always bring up is, and we were able to buy a huge chunk and we were able to pay for it. And I, I think that's a matter of pride. I really like the idea of coming back, revisiting the original intent here. I don't know what the unintended consequences are. If there's 723 out of the water fund, I, I, I don't know that, but I really appreciate your comments, Tom. And I think it's a legacy piece in Cave Creek. It is unusable for a town to buy something and pay for it and be done.
I think we can make it going forward. I think that's kind of a, kind of a smart idea. So I don't see that it has to, you know, we have to take money away from something else right now. I think when we reevaluate the water and sewer rates, which I think you guys said you were going to be doing, let's make, make sure it pays for itself. And then, then let's recoup these funds and put it in, in, in the open space fund.
I, I would think rolling something back into it would be a good idea. I mean, start small. You know, may, maybe you, maybe you take and match, match the trail money. That's only 100 grand, but, but put something in that back in the fund. Cause we did buy the 30 acres. And, and that cost us some money and, and, and maybe, maybe try to, try and find a way over the next couple of years to get it back to the level it was at before we did that. As we move forward, the closer, the closer we get to utilities being completely self-sustaining with CIP and everything else, frees up an awful lot. Of course, when those are paid off as well, then they can come back and make a heck of a, a contribution to doing that. But yeah, I think, I think, I think it's a good long-term goal to actually acquire that. Was disappointed we didn't gain further than we did.
I like a movement in that direction. I'd like to show to the community that we are indeed committed to Spur Cross into land acquisition. The assessment that comes in will certainly be very important, but I think it's strategically a good thing to do. Yes, thank you.
Maybe I don't want anybody knowing what I say. I think it's a good thing to do. And I think it's a message to the community that, that we have this commitment. And I agree with Dusty, you know, where, how much it's going to be is, is very open. I don't have a number in mind.
Well, I think that obviously we're all in favor of preserving open space. I am not confident that we can afford to do it in a, an $800,000 a year way. We have a fire department now that we didn't have in 2014 or 2017. And the numbers came in at $6 million to be able to afford the current station and the one that's currently being built. So we all have to take responsibility for paying for the fire department and the water interconnect. Yeah, utilities are taking up a whole lot of money now. So I'm all in favor of preserving land, but we have to make sure that we can pay all the bills.
This town has a record of doing really big things. Spur Cross being the one that kind of lit the fire all those years ago. I, I think the economic boom that the sales tax off of Carefree Highway in Carefree, Cave Creek Road and Carefree has been another just absolutely amazing thing. We would, our property values, everything else would be in terrible shape right now. Our water would be in jeopardy, everything if we didn't have that. And then the fire department with no taxes, no property tax was a huge stretch. And if you look in here, the last, starting in 2025, we're, we've we go, we're, we're red in 2027, I guess. I guess that's changed a bit since the earlier ones. But the we are not covering the, the cost of, of what we're doing. We've taken every opportunity to get open space that's been presented. We have accomplished every single one. We got the 30 acres. And that's the only one that I've been associated with since I've been on council. I, I think the problem here is timing. We are not, we are two to four years away from when we have a hope of the bonds rolling off and the utility companies, oh, they're separate utility companies. They don't cross subsidize each other. Intentionally they don't. But the general fund subsidizes the ones that don't carry their weight. And the, the one that, that is not doing that operationally is the, the sewer. It was just built too big. That's the hand that we're dealt. No one had, I didn't have any choice in that, but I've been working on it for awfully long time. But I, I think it's premature to take any significant amounts. If we want to do the symbolic number, I can, I can go along with that. But every dollar we take out of there puts us in greater jeopardy having to put it back in. We barely prevented a property tax. There were people in favor of property tax, permanent property tax, not just one like Spur Cross that goes away, but one that has to go on forever because you've got the operating revenue every year of the fire department, which has got to be around $5 million. And at some point, and the sales tax and some financial changes, we were able to avoid that. But the fact is that, that the water companies are what they are. And the economy is what it is, inflation is what it is. And that's part of the, the hand that we're dealt. So I'm, I'm going to oppose anything that is more than a symbolic. And the other thing is, we don't really have a target yet. We have made significant progress with state lands. They're willing to extend it, which I think we ought to give staff direction. I give my personal opinion to the town manager that that ought to get done. And there's no one interested in it. We've got it tied up with our zoning. And we have every intention of making a run at that, but we don't have the numbers back yet. So it's a ready fire aim a bit because we don't, we don't have a target yet. There is no piece of land on the horizon right now that's that we know we can afford and that we could say, well, this is the plan. And we're a few months away from doing that. So at the very least, I think this discussion ought to take place when all the facts are in. And in light of what we have here, we are not out of the woods on utilities. We're all, the progress has been incredible to, to be able to sit here today and say that Desert Hills is no longer costing us money. And the, this, this budget here, we're, we're way, we have $2 million being contributed to our capital program by the operating budget. Operating income is, is positive. So, but it just, the, the size of the job in the water company is just too big for it. And I didn't create that. But that is an existential issue for the town. Property values, if we, and we have two years of extraordinary high jeopardy facing us right now. Every night we have that jeopardy because of the many, many ways that that line can go down and stay down for a week, a month, who knows? And so the my advice all the way along in my, well, for living years has been to cover the essential high priority needs of the town and water and sewer or in fire, frankly, they're right at the top of the list. We can't live here- are in fire, frankly. Uh, they're right at the top of the list. We can't live here without those things. So, um, a symbolic move, I'm in favor of, but, uh, if we take anything significant, it is going to take a property tax if we don't have enough money to run that fire department and to, uh, uh, get the, the water companies in position to stop the, the subsidies.
Well, Bob, aren't
Let me finish some saying.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm, I've been talking a long time. I, I agree with you there. But the, um, that, that's all right. The, uh, it's a really good statement, too. It, it's, it's, um, property values are also extinct. So, um, i- i- if we're looking for something symbolic, and it's within the scope of the other things we're doing here, sign me up because I'm, I'm committed to making a really serious run. And frankly, I think I've, uh, had a significant hand in doing some of the really significant runs we've had in the past. That's kind of what the things that I do. So, uh, I'm, I, I, I can't support putting the whole amount in there. Because we're adding to this, we're adding to our deficit when the, our reserves are going down. And they're mainly going down because the fire department. But the operating costs for the fire department are going to go up next year by a million and a half dollars, and that, that's double what we have here. So we're, we're, we have a hole we've got to dig out, and we have consultant studies says we can do it. But it's going to take financial restraint. It's going to take being frugal everywhere we can be frugal. And, um, so I guess that's why I had to say, Paul, go ahead. Paul, ahead.
Well, I, I thought I heard you sort of conflating, um, the cost to do this with, um, an instant property tax, and maybe I just jumped to conclusions there, but, and, and I don't have a problem with dialing this conversation back to um, something symbolic at all. I just really like the idea of the Cave Creek tradition that we do big things, and we have a plan about how to do it. And we have dates certain to start it and strange, strange results are that we could finish it. We paid for it and we own it. I love that. So, I don't know. I, I don't know what the symbolic number in your mind is, Bob, but I'd love to hear that.
Well, the first thing is plan. Yes, first you heard that. And, and that's one of the key issues I had is there is no plan, and there won't be until we get an idea what that, what that, uh, number is of the uh, appraisal and run that by state lands and see what they salute and what they're willing to do. It, it's a negotiation. So we can't predict, we can't plan until we kind of have that give and take and see, see what, what the issue is. And maybe it's by, taking bite-sized pieces. Who knows? But, uh, I, 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 I just want to have a plan before we kick something into gear. And I, this, this is a symbolism. But I'm from business, and you got to pay those bills, and you, and we don't want to run things down. We've, I mean, we could go several years pulling our reserves down, but I certainly don't want to do that. I like having that money in the bank ready to go. I think, uh, Tom, you want to say something?
I think it's important for us to recognize that the history that we have. If only it's a symbolic, and my question for you is, uh, could you suggest what you thought, what you think might be symbolic that fits in reasonably? I agree. We've got to see where assessments come in before we can be truly, truly strategic. But I think I would like to see us saying to the community, this is something important. And do you have any number in mind when you, when you say symbolic? You know numbers better than I do.
Well, uh, a hundred thousand, I don't know, uh. I mean, I mean, it's, it's going to come out of the reserves. It's not going, it, it, our spending is not going to decrease. So it, it's not money that's coming from sales taxes. It's money that's coming out of the reserve. That's, that's the net area that's coming from. So you're taking money from the reserve and putting it over into, I guess we could always put it back. So, so we could put, we could put a ten million over there and then bring it back.
We've tapped, right. We've tapped that, that fund before.
I'm looking at my legally do that, can't we?
Yes.
Yeah. So we can take money out of one reserve and put it into another, which is what this is.
Mayor, it may, um, good discussion, and I, it's, it's really enlightening to see that the full council really is in support of, um, open space and, and acquisition of the state trust land. The staff and I have heard, um, some key things tonight, the messaging from, from the, uh, council. One suggestion came across is that that open space acquisition fund, maybe that money get folded in to the, uh, Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Fund. You know, or it could just stay where it's at. Either way, the money is appropriated for next fiscal year unless you want to change that. So that's good news there. That's about a million and a half, and, and of course it gets interest income on that. Um, it sounds very much like the council wants to kind of still maybe put together a plan, kind of see what the appraisal comes back at, and, and then try to figure out uh, the next steps, and that's, that's all very logical. Um, I also think once we put together a plan, I also think why this discussion is very important is that, um, we spent, we went a number of years before we actually tapped the reserves from that, um, from the utility fund thirty. We just took like almost four million dollars out to help with the, uh, Phoenix Interconnect. And so I guess what I'm saying is ultimately, once we have a plan, we can kind of figure out maybe in a bigger picture on, on how our finances are and how all these different pieces interrelate. Because like the mayor, I'm very concerned. I do see that the fire department services are a big driver to our operating expenditures. I'm very concerned, and, and the vice mayor mentioned that as well. And so I guess what I'm saying is this is probably good that we had this discussion because it appears that there might be some leaning towards possibly making some changes in our policy. But you need more information before you do that. And so I think this is all good. This is all, like, you guys all came, came together on a very, like, if this had been, come up two months ago or three months ago, I'm not sure we would have arrived at this conclusion today. So if I'm hearing this correctly, we either keep the open space acquisition fund where it's at, or we fold it into Spur Cross. Either way, it works for acquisition. So I would probably just suggest that we keep it where it's at now. And then the council will have a, a further discussion on this once we get the appraisal um, back, and we kind of figure out a strategy or a plan on acquisition, because I do think we're, it's going to be daunting with the number of acres that we have, and it's like, we'll feel like we can never, ever do it. But I think to the point of trying to figure out what's the most strategic parcels that we want to acquire, and how much that's going to cost, we can kind of put together a plan. It might be a multi-year plan. And it, we might be other funding sources besides this. It will probably have to be perhaps, um, going to the voters and, and seeking their authorization and having them help in other ways. So, um, that's what I'm hearing, and, and there's consensus on this issue, which is good. Difference of opinions on how to approach it.
Yeah. Can I ask a question? Just some clarification. The one point five million that's in the open space acquisition fund, that money was derived from the reallocation in twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen. Isn't that where it originated?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct, because that's when it was, when that council in twenty fourteen decided to reallocate the funds in part to open space. So I think symbolic that money should go back to the Spur Cross fund because that shows that we're serious, that we're giving back the money that we took in twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen that was targeted for open space and then reallocated in twenty seventeen back to the original intent. And so that would show that we're sincere, that we mean that money to be used for open space, but out of the original fund that it was created for.
So we have a half-cent sales tax. When was Spur Cross paid off?
Two thousand twelve.
It was paid off in two thousand twelve, so we've had a half-cent sales tax between two thousand twelve and two thousand seventy-four. When the WIFL loans are paid off, I strongly suggest we take a look at moving the money that was used diverted for other things that were necessary. But that is a large chunk of money that can be moved back into open space acquisition. I believe it's running around six point one, six point two million dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, I'm not suggesting that we do that today. But it's kind of, you're selling a property tax for acquiring open space, and then you're diverting it to other things just doesn't smack to me as, you know, a democratic or republican-formed government.
Or we could have expired the tax.
Or we could have expired the tax.
Which we did not do.
So I think we need to pay it back into the funds at some point. If not today, not
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to take a shot at that because I've, I've considered that myself, Dusty. Um, one issue we have with the things in the past, the people in town did not do this to themselves. The government did it to them as far as the utility systems. And, um, the people who were around then, there, there's, I think there's a fairness issue to it. I mean, that, they didn't have anything to do with that, asking them to pay back something they had nothing to, from mistakes that they, that were done to them rather than by them. I, I think we got to look at the fairness issue around that, too. And that's why I like bonding stuff. When, when we make improvements, and that's what I've talked with, and that was one of the key issues in the, uh, fire department was uh, bonding, uh, to avoid having the, uh, utilities take the current money. But bonding is the way to go because it, you only pay seven, seven percent. If you borrow ten million dollars, you pay seventy thousand dollars a year to carry it, and the people in the future who get the benefit from those facilities are the ones that pay for it. There's ultimate fairness in that. I, I just be careful of reversing that. And, and taxing, uh, having people pay for it who had nothing to do with it. It's kind of a reverse of that policy, I think.
At some point, though, we're going to have to use those funds to acquire land. So my suggestion is when the WIFL loans expire, we take that money and make up the, the backlog because we did say that this tax, we as a town said, this tax is for Spur Cross and open space acquisition. So people came here knowing that there was a half-cent sales tax.
I, I have all the information dating back to nineteen ninety-nine. Um, the, the language that was used to identify what this money was supposed to be used for. And it never specifically stated open space until twenty fourteen. Two thousand one, the legislation alludes to it, but it does not direct it. So to say that this was originally intended for open space is not true.
There were plans for a huge visitor center out there, uh, which was going to cost millions and millions and millions of dollars, and that, that's in the original IGA, I believe, with, uh, that need, that needs to be redone. The county, I think, was working on that. And I think that, I think, uh, a bunch of that was supposed to go toward those, those developments out there. Of course, nobody wanted the extra traffic out there anyway, so.
So, and the point, and again, I'm not trying to s- suggest that we don't, we're not in favor of open space. I just want to make sure that we're all clear on what the language was. And if you need any further proof, we can actually have this on a council agenda, so everybody sees how it evolved over time.
I've said, I've said for nineteen years, the only thing that we can do as a council that's going to matter a hundred years from now is open space. So keep that in mind.
Mr. Mayor, if the council liked the suggestion by, uh, vice chair, or if there was interest in the, or support by the staff to consider doing that for the purpose of storing money, calling it something, and it's show money for if we go downtown. Uh, one thing I would respectfully editorialize on is that we don't want to continue the relationship with the state land department, the price of land going up in this area, especially with the semiconductor plant. It buys us more time, we lose more money. We should either do this, do this in part, or not fool people that we're going to do it another four or five years. With, with the lot for McDonald's and the lot for the dog wash at a million dollars an acre and commercial up there as well. I mean, I just don't know that we're ever going to be realistic about this pursuit if we try to extend it for any purposes at all. Um, and this is not really symbolic. It is for political purposes, but it's not symbolic for the relationship, I think, with local government, with the community. Uh, so then I would come back and ask the council if you went with the vice chair's proposal, because the money's already there, and you're just calling it vacation money instead of APS money. Uh, what about then a delayed enactment for a year, a calendar year or a fiscal year for reestablishing that percentage that uh, would have been used for this purpose and, and committing to it at that point? That way you have another year to address the solvency issue.
I'm not sure I understand that, Tom.
In other words, if you went with Catherine's proposal, and you took the money that's already there on one line, and you put it in the other line, calling it Spur Cross, and it is seed money for whatever happens in the future, that we reestablish this formula starting one year in the future to where that percentage would come back into Spur Cross Fund.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm following what, what I'm following with, uh, Councilman Ragatton is saying. Um, so basically, and he, he he said in the first statement before he restated it, is, eh, you could always reevaluate and see where we are financially. Is, did you?
Right.
Yeah, so it, it causes no harm. So if it turns out like on the operating budget, general fund side, if, if the fire station or the fire services are, are, you know, we need to have that money for that support, or, or maybe the utilities aren't quite, uh, self-sustaining as we had hoped, or the rates aren't quite covering. What he's saying is that you guys could make a decision, say in June, or say a year from now. And then you can always change your mind. You could probably write it up in such a way that it's all subject to council may change its mind at, at any future occasion, which they always have that opportunity.
Well, I just did a quick calculation, and, uh, at twenty thousand dollars an acre, it's eighty million dollars to buy that. Eighty million. And that's out of a general fund of fourteen million a year. And, uh, uh, one point eight million for the sales tax, so it, it's, um, uh, unless something falls from the sky, it, it's going to, it's a, it's monumental.
I've heard discussion of certain pieces of land that would, would look strategically like they might be added. And once we get evaluation, then I think we can look at those. Looking at the whole thing of eighty million dollars, I think your figure may be correct, maybe more than that, but I think we can look at piece by piece, as we did with the thirty acres.
Well, that was my question. If we should move the money from one fund to another, would we be prohibited from using that money to buy other parcels if we see fit?
I don't believe there is, but that would be something maybe we want to check with Mr. Sims on, but, um, based on this discussion here, we can certainly, we have time to get that evaluated. I think that it's, it would be appropriate. We can come back at later timing. We would have that information.
Okay, so are we?
Good discussion.
Yep.
Are we making a decision on?
Well, um, there's no harm, I believe, to just keep it where it's at, but if, if there's some symbolism in moving it, I do believe we could move it since it originally came from that fund, correct?
Yeah.
So I don't see there is any issue if the council consensus is with that. We'll go ahead and put that into tentative budget. We'll have to figure out how to make a transfer of that funding.
Right. So our, I, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding after this discussion. So instead of the, um,
The open space.
Yeah, the eight hundred, the seven sixty-three, six fifty, as it's in the packet.
No, no, what they're saying is the one and a half million dollars, the one point four eight two million, that's in the open space acquisition fund. Since it originally came from the Spur Cross, let's put that back into the, um, Spur Cross.
Okay, so we're closing out the open space?
Yeah, that's what they're saying, or you close it out and just leave it zeroed out is what I would do. I wouldn't eliminate it.
But that, I, these two, I, I really wonder why we, the housekeeping, why do we even have two funds?
I don't understand it myself. There had to be a reason for it.
I think it was set up by ordinance, actually.
But I don't understand the logistics, why it was done that way.
I, I agree with that.
So maybe we could consolidate. Yeah, I mean, probably not this, this coming Monday, but maybe the, the next, next one, just stick it out there.
Okay. Yeah, no, um, so what we would do is we could do that as part of the tentative budget adoption, and we can come back with the information the night of the tentative budget adoption. The tentative budget adoption.
Okay.
So good, good consensus and we'll move forward with that then.
Okay.
So moving forward.
Yeah, the next, um, special revenue fund we're gonna cover then is the open space acquisition fund, which is, um. On page twenty-five of thirty-nine of your packet. And, um. This fund has an estimated, uh, ending fund balance at June thirty, twenty twenty-four of a million forty-two, six ninety-five. In there, um, currently, as we had, um, originally proposed, it would take in, um. Some interest income in twenty-five and we had an appropriation to, um, in there for the, uh, amount of a million. Five fifty-four, six ninety-five, um, available to spend. Um, in fiscal year twenty-five.
So, so this is what we were just talking about would be.
Moving that into the spur cross fund. Okay, so we will, um, make note to look at the, do some research on that ordinance and see what it says. Okay, any other questions on open space this time? No? Okay. The, um, last special revenue fund then that we're gonna cover then is the, uh, grant fund. And that's on page twenty-six of thirty-nine of your, um, big packet. And, um, this is, this special revenue fund is a zero, uh, fund balance fund, um, as well. What we budget as, um, expected to come in for grant revenues also gets expended out of that fund. Leaving, um, it with a zero fund balance, but we're estimating, um. And appropriating for three million six sixty-five, um, in, um. Grant funded expenditures for fiscal year twenty-five.
Does this include the two million dollars from? Our Senator.
Congressional directed spending. Note that two million dollars is in the, uh, Cave Creek Water Fund.
So what, what, what fund, what grants, do all the grants go into the grant fund or just certain grants?
Yes, so the way, um, we currently have it, uh, structured is the grant fund is a governmental fund. Um, the utility funds are enterprise funds, so if it's, um. If it's a grant for general government, it's placed in the, um, um. Grant fund. If it's a grant for the enterprise funds, it's recognized in, in those funds directly.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Could I pick up one second?
Sure.
I do have the ordinance numbers for you if.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Easy. Very first one was in twenty fourteen. That reallocated the spur cross funds, yeah, to water infrastructure, I mean, to, uh, open space. And that is ordinance number oh, twenty fourteen dash oh-one. And then three years later, the council at that time changed it again. And that ordinance is oh, twenty seventeen dash oh-two.
The last one was, um, oh, twenty seventeen dash two, dash oh-two. Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. You're hired as our next clerk.
Okay, I knew David would be proud of me. I have the history right here, Dan.
Okay, um, so with that, we're closing out, um, our special revenue funds and moving to, um, our capital project fund. We have one, it's the water infrastructure capital improvement fund. And in this fund, um, our estimated. Ending fund balance for fiscal year twenty-four is three million five fifty-three, three eighty-six. Um, that moves, um, forward as our estimated beginning fund balance. We have some interest income that gets applied to that. And we have two, um, we've got the transfer in that's coming in to that fund from spur cross. Uh, that's in your packet at seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And we have a transfer out to the, uh, Cave Creek Water Fund. For, um, the Phoenix Interconnect project of the three million eight oh-seven, seven forty-eight. Uh, which leaves the, uh, ending fund balance at six hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. In the, uh, Cave Creek Water Infrastructure Fund. Any questions from council on this? Okay. So now we're moving, uh, forward to, um, our enterprise funds. And, uh, these are the funds that are used to account for the operation.
Do I have a question?
Yes.
So in the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget, we're gonna leave the seven sixty-three, six fifty in. But going forward, we're going to try to recoup that in. Uh, with the water rate adjustments, correct? Just wanna make sure I'm.
That, that, that's a council decision. She can't answer that question.
Yeah.
That takes action by the council.
That transfer in, um, to the, uh, Cave Creek Water Infrastructure Fund is required by ordinance to be made. Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, I thought, thought we said that we're gonna readjust the water rates, if I'm not correct, or.
So when we had the discussion yesterday, when we were looking at the general fund. One of the things that, um, I mentioned to the council is that Sean was working on his capital master plan. Because there, um, have been cost escalations and there's some other projects that he needs to, uh, include in the three different utilities. And so we were gonna go ahead and have a workshop with the council likely in the fall that would take a look at that. And also take a look at the rates and see if the rates, how well they're recovering, because we currently know that. They're only recovering enough for the operating expenditures, but not enough for the capital. So we will take a look at that and see what, if any, rates need to be, um. Possibly adjusted, but there's also other things we can do before you start talking about rates. We'll wanna bring in Will Dan, um, who's helped us with our rate model. And look at some of these, as you've mentioned, possible financings that might help smooth these things out. So you're absolutely right. We are looking at bringing something back to the council to look at this in a bigger picture, kind of a sense.
Okay, that answers the question.
Okay, so for our, um, enterprise funds, these are the funds that are used to account for the operations that are financed and operated. Um, in a manner similar to our, um, private sector enterprises. Where the intent is of the governing body is that the cost of the goods and services that are provided are recovered. Um, through their user charges. Um, and the town has, um, three enterprise funds. Um, wastewater, cave creek water, desert hills water, and we also have listed in here as a separate fund, the twenty, uh, twenty-three WIFAL loan fund. Um, that shows the, uh, proceeds being spent down for the Phoenix Interconnect, uh, project. So these, um, this next slide is, uh, for the enterprise funds, some information on, uh, the revenues. The council adopted, uh, water and wastewater utility rates. Have been included in the, um, proposed budget revenues for our utility funds for fiscal year twenty-five. Um, similar to, um. The discussion that we just previously had with regard to the half cent sales tax, uh, for spur cross. Um, that same issue, um, applied in wastewater, so, um. We'll see that, um, small adjustment, um, when we get to the wastewater fund. Um, the grant funds that have been applied for and awarded have been also included in the Cave Creek Water Fund. Those, um, are, um, consist of two. The first one being the two million dollar, um, congressionally directed spending grant. And the second being for fiscal year twenty-five, the, um, two hundred and fifty thousand for the, uh, Water Smart Grant. And the twenty twenty-three WIFAL loan enterprise fund, um, is budgeted to account for the WIF expenses. That will be, um, drawn down for reimbursement from our, um, loan proceeds. And then some summary information here for our enterprise funds. Um, the adopted enterprise fund budget for fiscal year twenty-four. Was thirty-four million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, uh, which included expenses and transfers out. The, um, expenses and transfers out for the, um, all of our enterprise funds for, uh, fiscal year twenty-five. Um, the preliminary budget that staff has put together, um, today for council, for the council workshop is thirty-one million, six sixty-three, nine oh-three. The difference between those two years actually is a, a decrease of about two point seven million dollars. The primary reason for the, um, difference is. In, um, fiscal year twenty-four, all of the Phoenix Interconnect, uh, project financing costs were budgeted. Um, in twenty-four and the budget for those, um, is, uh. About five million dollars less in twenty-five. Um, and we also have some additional capital improvement project, um. Projects across, um, all three of our, uh, utility funds. The same assumptions that we had, um, on the general fund, on the, uh, CPI or the consumer price index. Um, is up to the three and a half percent as of March of twenty twenty-four. Um, included is a, uh, salary market adjustment of three and a half percent. That's been included in the twenty-five proposed budget, um, as part of the personnel cost totals in the, um, upcoming. Enterprise proposals. And the, um. Enterprise proposals also contain, um, some additional positions that we've included in the twenty-five proposed budget. Um, the first one is a wastewater operator three position that's, um, a hundred percent funded by the wastewater fund. There's a utility worker position that's funded fifty percent from Cave Creek Water and fifty percent from Desert Hills Water. And there are four part-time water treatment operator positions, um, a hundred percent funded by the Cave Creek Water Fund.
It, it's a hundred percent in the Cave Creek Water, but, uh, Desert Hills also shares in the need for part-time workers. So I presume that's gonna be allocated out for the correct shares.
Sean, do you wanna respond, please?
Mayor, council, um, yeah, so we fund, uh, currently fund all the water treatment costs in Cave Creek Water. And that, when we did the twenty-two rate study, we actually came up with and developed the cost for Desert Hills to pay for, uh, basically our treatment. Of the water. So that is covered. So the goal here is to give us some part-time operators. We currently have three operators and one supervisor at that plant. Um, during the summer, we currently don't anticipate running twenty-four seven unless there's emergency, but it's really hard to account for vacations and stuff like that. So the part-time operators to help do info on the weekends. And as we did that last year successfully, we wanna continue that moving forward.
Thank you.
So on, uh, we're gonna start with the wastewater system and that is on page twenty-eight of thirty-nine of your, um, big packet. And what is proposed for fiscal year, um, twenty-five, we have, um, operating costs of a million, six ninety-eight, five seventy-nine. We have, uh, capital, um, expenditures proposed of a million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And debt service of a million, eight ninety-four, three ninety-three. With a, um, wastewater, uh, department budget total of four million, nine hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. This next slide is, um, the fund summary, uh, for wastewater. This can also be found on page thirty of thirty-nine of your, um, packet. Um, this slide, uh, the last column is the, uh, twenty-five proposed budget. It starts by, uh, showing the total operating revenue we have coming in of the three point four million dollars. Uh, the next section is our, um, operating expenditures. Of the three million, five ninety-two, nine seventy-two. Wastewater shows a, um, deficit in its net operations of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Our, um, next section is our one-time section, which shows, um, a million, four eighty-nine, nine forty. Coming in from, uh, transferring from the general fund. And a capital expenditures going out of a million, three twenty-five. Um. To net offset, um, our, uh, deficit below to bring the ending fund balance to, um, zero for wastewater.
Interesting thing here is that, uh. With the debt service of about two million bucks. And the transfers in from the general fund of one point five, looks like we will. Uh, be in that position of the, of the median our expenses without all this subsidy from the. General fund, barring any big capital needs, which we should. Borrow for if that all possible.
Absolutely.
For any expansion.
I, I do have a question. I know we have a bunch of dry sewer lines out there right now in various neighborhoods. Um, when we have this two-day. You know, plan session that we're talking about. We also talk about how we might wanna try to get people hooked up into that wastewater. Because the more people we have in the system. Uh, the less expensive it's gonna be for the people who are on the system.
Right, we share the, uh, you know, the, the overhead costs with more people. I agree.
Yeah, and then, I mean, there's some, there's some kind of, as we go through our pavement master plan. If we could kind of tie this to as we're doing things, it would be nice to interrupt the neighborhood one time instead of multiple times. Um, just if we can talk about that and that.
Okay, that's a really good suggestion.
I, I know it's not budget related, but it sorta is.
Of course, no, it, it is and, um. You know, I have to tell you, um, a lot of different departments, um, you know, in bigger cities operate in silos. And here I'm, I'm very proud to say that both Hal and Sean do a lot of coordination. And so when one is planning a project like a pavement management project, the other talks about what they might have planned, you know, and so.
Make them dance, that's.
But I, I, I'm very, I, I think they do a good job of that, but I, I think to your point, that always needs to be part of the picture. And, and sometimes it's not always something you wanna hear too, like, oh, we're, we're gonna. You know, we've delayed doing this particular pavement project because we know in a year or two, we're gonna have to get in there and do this, this sewer line. Or water line.
Sure, as much as we can synchronize it, that, that makes sense.
Right.
The other thing is we need to start taking a look at as people, uh, age out of their current septic services. Let's get them onto, onto the sewer system.
Absolutely.
It'll be cheaper than putting in a new septic, septic, uh, field.
I, I have a question though, related to that. Uh, so there are neighborhoods who have dry sewer lines. Asana de Choya is one that I'm thinking. Doesn't the neighborhood have to agree to go on sewer? Uh, we can't just force them on it.
I'll let Sean, he, he has more experience in this. We were talking a little bit about this today.
Mayor, Mayor Council, it is a bit of a policy question because, um, there was three neighborhoods that were put in. A couple of neighbors that were built with dry sewers, uh, before the town relocated the treatment plant down the Carefree Highway. So as part of our master plan, we've actually looked at how we can connect those. So that's actually being identified in the master plan. A routing study has been completed, is actually showing that we need to purchase amisements in order to make that work. So now that we have that and they're gonna, the master plan, I'll actually also identify with the cost of that project will be. Um, but yes, we will have to actually work with each individual landowner. Currently, the way code says, it's, it's kind of a weirdly, uh. Uh, worded section codes is discontinuing which is service. It says if you have a private, um, septic system on a residential lot, they do not need to connect until it fails.
Hmm.
Um, so effectively, we won't offer a waiver to them, uh, to, to get a new septic permit from Maricopa County. So it's probably a discussion as we move forward with the cost of actually putting in the new lines, make those, uh, dry sewers live. Is what do we wanna do? How do we wanna encourage those people? Cause currently code doesn't require them to connect. It only requires, um. Uh, commercial buildings or multifamily properties within three hundred feet of the live sewer, within one year of notice in the town to make a connection. But residential's are excluded unless the septic fails. So that's something we, I'd like to bring back. Uh, with, with great approval to council to discuss that. What would that policy look like? Well, how would we encourage those people to get onto the septic system? Or off the septic system onto the, the town sewer system.
And in other communities I've worked in, um, the residential side at least, um, we incentivized it by. Um, not charging interest and, and basically financing it over, I think it was ten years, as far as we went. And it, it really, it, it's a no-brainer really for a lot of people. Uh, so that's, that's one way we can do it. But of course, that all has to be factored in and figure out how we can financially bear that cost ourselves. But that's just an example we can do, um, and it makes total sense to get these people on our, our sewer system.
I, I just think that'd be part of that two-day, opposite, not opposite, two-day discussion, is talking about workshop. I think this would be a great part of.
Right, but going into it, we need to understand that it isn't just a done deal, if, because we want to do it.
Yes, right, correct.
Mr. Mayor, just following up on this discussion. Um, in the case of new subdivisions, does anybody know if we have language that pledged hook up with the town? Not based on individual parcel owners, but on the plat perhaps recorded with the town or?
Mayor Council, uh, none of the, none of the existing. Mayor Council, none of the, none of the existing plats because have that language. There's been discussion of changing town code to to make the, extend the discontinuation service to include any new subdivisions. New subdivisions also have the challenge of per the town's code and water policy, they have to bring us new water resources too. But currently, I'm not aware of any plats that have that language on. I'm saying that they will connect onto this or we actually don't have that many subdivisions outstanding that aren't partially built out or already worked on, except you know, Cohava Springs is an example, but Cohava Springs is allowed to be septic as per their development agreement. And their final plan allows them to go such.
But, but we work on the, on the front end with these, these applicants when they come through. And I'm pretty confident that the Galway across from the library, they're all on sewer.
Oh, they are, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, we like a traditional subdivision, absolutely. But when you start getting into some of these large lots, you know, being subdivided and turning into a smaller subdivision of four. It's very challenging, but if they're right there, we really work and try to encourage them. The property that's right behind the McDonald's, I forget what that's called, but that as an example, that's a newer subdivision. We do that on the front end and just make it very clear that they, they need to connect and that that needs to be part of their development. And so the developer understands they have to pay their development fees and everything on the front end to try to make that work.
Just to follow up if I could, should we in fact ask someone to review the fact that the language is not currently in ordinance and bring it back to this council to try to get it amended? It's interesting. I didn't know that Cohava Springs is eligible to be on septic up there.
They're not.
They're allowed to be.
They are.
I think that needs to be relooked.
It, that's, that's been on the work list for years. Yeah, the, the instructions to staff were to change code to require any new subdivisions to either be on the septic or sewer system or to put their own sewer system in and return the water. So because there's a water conservation issue with it too, especially if they're getting town water. Because we only recover like ten percent of our water in the town system. We have a terrible recovery. So it's a water conservation as well as a environmental issue to, to put sewer systems in and not put septics in. Or something. I think that needs to get closer to the front end of the the work list. Who, I don't know who does that code, but.
As far as the ordinances that need to be updated, yes.
It's been out there. That's been.
I was just made aware of this, for instance, this is a really good point. So we'll definitely add that to the top of the list. And I've just wrote the note down so that Sean and I could get with Bill on this.
Do you need me to tell you what the ordinance number is?
Only if you have it, it'd be very easy if you have to have it.
You can assign it.
You could add clairvoyant to your other list of things that you've got. Okay. Any other questions before we move on?
Just one comment from me though, on the this wastewater fund summary. The local sales tax listed there, the million, seven sixty two, five hundred. That is the one that will be fixed and adjusted to the million, eight ninety four, three hundred. So it'll increase by the hundred and thirty one thousand, eight hundred, which then brings the transfer in from the general fund down from the million, four eighty nine to a million, three fifty eight. And you'll see that when we bring it back as part of the tentative budget. So just to summarize here for the wastewater fund, it will require a proposed transfer in from the general fund in the amount of the million, four eighty nine, nine forty, or the revised amount of a million, three fifty eight, one forty to balance the fund. And also a note on the wastewater fund too, per our town financial policies. There should be a ten percent contingency set aside in the wastewater fund. But because it requires a transfer in from the general fund, the contingency was not established as it's just more money in from the general fund. So that wraps it up for wastewater unless there's any other questions. Okay, so we'll move forward to the Cave Creek Water System. We're proposing for the fiscal year twenty five budget to have operating expenses of three million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Capital expenditures of eight million, three hundred and ninety two thousand, seven hundred and forty eight dollars. Debt service of two million, three hundred and forty five dollars for a proposed Cave Creek Water System budget of fourteen million, three hundred and twelve dollars. Or fourteen million, three hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and forty three dollars. On the next slide and on page thirty three of thirty nine of your big packet is the fund summary for the Cave Creek Water Fund. The, the last column on the right is the fiscal year twenty five proposed budget column, which is showing the total operating revenues coming in of the six million, eight hundred thousand. We have operating expenditures that next section down of five million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, one ninety five for net operations in the black for Cave Creek Water System of nine hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty two. The next section is the one time sources and uses. We've got our capital expenditures coming out of that fund of the eight million, three hundred and ninety two thousand, seven hundred and forty eight dollars. And then our one time sources coming in of, we've got the grant funds in there of the two million, two hundred and fifty thousand. We have the transfers in that are listed there, the five million, eighty five thousand, nine oh six, which represents a million, two seventy eight, one fifty eight coming in from the general fund and the three million, eight oh seven, seven forty eight coming in from the Cave Creek Water Infrastructure Fund. We have a little bit in interest income shown there, but our net one time sources and uses offsets the, it's a use, it offsets the operations gain that we had for a net result of a zero for Cave Creek Water. Cave Creek Water however, does have a beginning fund balance in there of the million, three thirty six, five forty one, which represents our WIFA reserves. So that money is still covered with a unassigned ending fund balance of zero.
Is that going down every year as we pay those loans off?
The reserves?
Reserve.
No, those reserves stay the same until, until it's paid off.
Dollar, we'd still have to have one point three million dollar reserve.
Yes, however, we are we are working with our financial advisor to see about reaching out to WIFA, about getting those reserves released back to us. So more information on that to come. Any questions on Cave Creek Water? So this next slide is just the quick summary then of Cave Creek, the Cave Creek Water Fund. It will require a proposed transfer in from the general fund in the amount of the million, two seventy eight, one fifty eight to balance the Cave Creek Water Fund. And it also has a transfer in from the water infrastructure of the three million, eight oh seven, seven forty eight that will be used to cover the costs of the Phoenix Interconnect Project. All right, and Desert Hills is next up. And for the fiscal year twenty five proposed budget, we are proposing operating expenses of two million, seven forty seven, two seventy eight. Capital charges of nine hundred and thirty two thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and debt service of eight hundred and fifty two thousand, two hundred and sixty nine dollars for a total Desert Hills fiscal year twenty five budget cost of four million, five thirty two, two fifty nine. The next slide, which can be found on page thirty six of thirty nine in your big packet is the fund summary for the Desert Hills Water Fund. And again, the last column on the right is the twenty five proposed budget. This shows our operating revenue for the Desert Hills Water System at four million, five twenty five, two hundred. Next section is our operating expenditures of three million, five ninety nine, five forty seven, which leaves the Desert Hills op net operations in the black, nine hundred and twenty five thousand, six hundred and fifty three dollars. We've got capital expenditures coming out of the nine hundred and thirty two thousand, seven twelve. Some interest income coming in and a net result in the Desert Hills Water Fund of zero. The beginning fund balance for this water fund was thirty six thousand, eight oh two, and it ends at thirty six thousand, eight oh two. The WIFA reserve requirements are shown there at four hundred and sixty six thousand, five hundred and ninety one dollars, which leaves the unassigned fund balance of four twenty nine, seven eighty nine.
Explain that. So, so the, we have four sixty six, five ninety one with a reserve. Was that funded by the Desert Hills or was that funded out of the general fund?
That was funded out of the general fund initially when those reserves were established. But I, I'm pretty sure, I'm ninety nine percent sure that those were forgiven back. I think that was twenty twenty one.
Now the reserve was not forgiven. Because it, I, I'm gonna, I, that needs some checking.
Okay.
The policy is we absolutely do not subsidize anything to do with desert.
Desert Hills, okay, I will double check on, on the Desert Hills piece. I know.
There were no reserves at the, in the first rate study, there were no reserves. I remember that clearly.
Okay, I will double check that. I know the Cave Creek Water Reserves were forgiven. When the, when the.
They were all zeroed out because the accounting was so bad, the cost accounting was like Humpty Dumpty, it was broken up, so we couldn't.
See what was in there.
Going on, so it was hopeless to recreate it, so we zeroed it out. But that should be funded by the rates and if it's, if it's come out of general fund, it needs to be paid back.
We'll look into that.
We'll look into that.
Get back to it, the tentative budget or prior to that if we can.
Okay. So this last side, slide is just the summary for the Desert Hills Water Fund. It had a positive ending fund balance of the thirty six thousand, eight oh two. However, this amount, it was not enough to cover the WIFA reserve requirement that of the four sixty six, five ninety one. So it leaves Desert Hills with an ending unassigned fund balance of a negative four twenty nine, seven eighty nine.
So that, that'll be an issue for the rate study then, correct?
Yes. It's my understanding versus the other two funds, the other utilities, this is one that we just allow to continue to go into the negative.
Right, and the, I mean, I think it's also the net operations are being covered, really what's causing the negative and that's, is the capital expense in this fund.
The capital and reserve should come out of, out of rates, both of them.
Any other questions for on Desert Hills? Okay, so our next slide just presents the next steps here in our budget process. On Monday, May twentieth, council will consider adoption of the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five tentative budget at the regular council session. And on Monday, June third is when we'll have the public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five final budget.
So we will be bringing back the night of the tentative budget, the information that we had previously discussed about the open space and the funding and the ordinances and what they state. So we will have that be, and if it needs to be a discussion as a separate item that night that you can act on it separately, we can do that or we can possibly have it on as a, as a, one of the package of things that you consider that night. But we'll, we'll definitely bring back an answer and then you guys can get direction. And if you want to make, take action on some sort of a policy related to that, we'll bring it back that night.
May twentieth.
The next, the tentative night of the adoption is what I said.
Which would be.
I, I'm sorry, I said the tentative night of the adoption. That makes no sense. No wonder you're asking the clarification. Whatever you said.
So the staff, anything else to?
That's all we really have. I know one of the things that, we have big drivers obviously in the utility funds. And so one of the things we're always interested in trying to do is trying to see what we can do to reduce transfers from the, from the general fund to the, like the capital for the three utilities. So one of the things that I think we are kind of came up with last minute, I apologize, but we're going to try to see if we can reduce some of the capital by either deferring or pushing out, which would then try to keep the utility budgets within as close as they could be within their budget and just reduce the amount of the transfers from the general fund in. So one of the ideas that Sean had with me earlier today was maybe, Sean, you want to come up to the podium?
So the half million dollars, I, that was on, yeah, in the, Mayor Council on the wastewater fund. We've identified, it came in a couple of years ago, we put a hundred thousand dollars a year into a program for connecting dry sewer areas. It was nebulous at the time because we hadn't completed the master plan. But as we wrap up the match, master plan, we still don't really have the parameters for that program of what it would be and what we'd spend that money on. So one suggestion is we take that out and then as through the master plan, we'll be identifying a couple of other projects that we need to be bringing in. Again, the alignment study to bring this dry sewer areas in, we actually get to complete that. But that's something that we thought we could defer and take out of the
Is your master plan microphone on?
It's just all.
Yeah.
Do you want this seat, Sean? Is this more convenient for you?
Okay, yeah, so we wanted to, I'm gonna be real close to it, sorry about that. Yes, we thought that it would be best if we looked to take that out of the wastewater capital program. It's a half million dollars, it's a hundred thousand dollars starting next fiscal year through the five years capital program. Be something that we'd want to come back and have that conversation with council about what, what do we want to do? How we prioritize connecting the dry sewer areas and the unsued areas in the town that are close to sewers. So that's one thing that Gray and I discussed. And as you know, we develop that, we can get into, looking at the rate model in the fall to see again how, how everything can be funded. And then what that would look like. That's one thing that just jumped out as, as we looked at the, the, the program. There's a few other projects, less so in the first year, but the next couple of years that was something that we can look to defer, push out. You know, again, if you ask me which project we should get out, a lot of what we're dealing with is really dealing with repair and maintenance and of the system to help for system reliability, redundancy, safety of the system, water quality, wastewater services. So we could look, again, if we can't fund it, we can't fund it. And we can look to push them out and see when we can fund it. And that's something we wanted to, to offer up to council.
So all I'm just trying to wrap it up and just let you know is, when we come back with the tentative budget, if we do have those opportunities, we'll call them out and, and show those to you. But it, it would have made sense, I know, to look at those projects individually, but I think in the, in the matter of time, I think he still needed to review these and, and determine what potential cost savings and where the deferments can take place. So I would tell you, we're very close and I'd say we're about ninety nine percent there on the budget of what you will see when we come back on the twentieth. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have of, of the staff.
Let's let, let's take quick, we can follow up after that. Let's think, the, the audience has been sitting here faithfully for three and a half hours now, so. Over two days, so if, if the audience has some comments, that'd be a good time to do that.
David Phelps, Cave Creek resident. Because this is a work session, I suspect we're going to suspend the clock because we're just all family here. So one of the things that I think would be helpful for the resident as a commoner, if we could convert our percentages that we're going to make the raises in all of our funds, like we have a three and a half percent pay increase average. If we could convert that to a dollar figure, I think that would be helpful for the common person going through the budget to help understand. And that, that conversion would need to be done on every expense. And that, that conversion would need to be done on every expense, the medical, dental, uh whatever is going up, because it's not going down, needs, we need to show the dollar amount equivalent to the percentage, just, I think it would be helpful. I had a different way of achieving Dusty's suggestion. I suggest that if we're gonna continue to spend over the revenues that we collect on the water company, or if we need to borrow more money for projects for sewer, that you would at least collect five bucks a month from each rate payer until the debt pays off. That allows that debt to be uh refinanced. And then that five dollars would be building, that five dollars a month per rate payer would be building uh offsetting it would uh the amount that we would be, I want to say deficit spending, but we're not deficit spending because we truly have the cash to do it. Uh, the other issue was uh on Augerton's suggestion, uh Councilman Augerton's suggestion. The monies I think that were targeted were the general fund monies. So that the water and water im- improvement fund could continue to be funded. It was the targeted money that was going into the general fund, the other half of that. So I don't think it was the green one, I think it was the other part that was scheduled to go to the general fund. Yes, by fully funding that this year, you would not be able to say we have twenty million dollars in reserves. You would have nineteen point two million dollars more or less in reserves. But you would be making a very big statement to the state land department. I don't agree with the idea that now that we have the open space acquisition fund established with funds, that we would change the name of it, stop moving the spaghetti on the plate. Uh, I went back to the twenty fifteen Caffer and found that, in fact, it was called uh the Open Space Acquisition Fund in twenty fifteen. And oddly enough, in twenty fifteen, before it was diverted to help offset uh the losses in major expenses and in in infrastructure improvements we needed to make, uh it had uh one point five, just over one point five million dollars uh in the Spurcross and Open Space Acquisition Fund. So there's always been an Open Space Acquisition Fund element to that fund, I think we should leave it there. I like the idea that we're making it available now, but does that mean that it won't be able to make interest? I think it's still gonna be able to make the interest, right? I'm sorry, Mayor, could you ask?
Yes, I can answer that one.
Of course, so so it's still gonna be growing, it's still gonna be growing a little bit. Uh, and uh to the point of, you know, the what ifs on the disaster side, I think there should be the emphasis on structuring the capital improvements that we feel we can't live without uh with, with debt service. You're right on the ball on that one in terms of, we need to have the future pay for these investments we're making now their fair share. Only way to do that is to, we can upfront fund the cost, but we need to restructure the the expenses so that we're not burdened with what, you know, what these expenses are solely out of the fu- the money that we've been able to collect since we built Main Street down on Carefree Highway. I really appreciate you guys uh allowing me to come up and uh put in a few comments, and that's where I'm at with that.
David, I want to answer that last one there, the, a a lot of what we are calling capital is really just deferred maintenance.
Understood, but it's in the capital expense, it's over fifty grand.
We can bond out of some of the stuff you may not be able to borrow for. It uh is my understanding that it has to be a capital project, but we can move the money around and take it here and there.
I guess what I'm looking at is what you were saying earlier, I'm trying to capitalize on your words, which is, we should be uh using financing to make the bigger improvements. I agree, if it's just a deferred maintenance issue, if it's small enough, but if we're gonna continue to subsidize uh via the Spurcross Sales Tax or from the general fund to the CapEx fund on the water company or the sewer, whatever we can use for some time to get out there, I think it, it helps us free up money that we need for land acquisition. I do disagree with you wholeheartedly on, we don't have a plan, many of us have a plan, Mayor. We've been coming to you asking for money to go back into acquisition. I've been coming up here now for five years asking for people to get together, turn the faucet back on to preservation funding because the clock is ticking with the state land department. That land price isn't going down, we know that it's ascending. And I would like to be here and uh to enjoy the the fruits of the labor of the wait. And the wait has been fifteen years. So I think to turn on the funding mechanism prematurely, as I have expressed before, when we go to do our discussions with the state land department, I would really like to have an elephant gun to show our commitment and not the same amount of money that we had in twenty fifteen, but the amount of money we could have in a, in a year or two from now, that could be double that number, double the one point five. Like, three to four million dollars would be an ideal number to go sit down and say, yeah, we could make a down payment on something. Or we could do a strategic buy of something that nobody else has a chance at. And that's the plan, all right, thank you.
Any others? Okay, uh, saying no further business, or let's see if council has anything last comments or questions before we?
I I would just like to remind everybody in the room that we did preserve thirty point six acres just last year at a total cost of about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so. And it came out of that fund, so it's not like we're just sitting on it. We are waiting for the right opportunities and the right partners, we can't always fund it all by ourselves. So last year, we were fortunate to work again cooperatively with Maricopa County. And um, you know, I think that's ultimately what's most important, is that we as a town can't do it all ourselves. We have to have partnerships and uh that's what I hope that we can also look at, not only just what our fund balance shows, but what partners can we generate to help us buy this property?
I'd like to thank the new town manager and staff for coming up with a, what I see as a comprehensive budget in uh circumstances where you got a late, late start, and uh it looks good, guys.
Yes, thank you very much for all your hard work.
Well, I certainly echo that, I I just can't believe we're in this good a shape where we started like a month ago or so. So uh, nice work, thanks for all the hard work, the weekends, I understand there's some weekends involved in this, so. Congratulations to everybody, I think it's, we're well on the way and uh we'll do good things for the town.
You set a high bar. They've set a high bar.
Okay, with no further business, meeting adjourned.